Testing, testing.
I was just keeping your spot warm. How are you, boss?
With, with, uh, um, Arto going, we could have a three-three tie now.
Uh-oh. Well, if I'm, if I'm recusing, now it's down to five. I'll hope this time, but can't guarantee it'll be good for next time.
Did you have a haircut today?
Uh, yesterday.
Yesterday? It looks fresh, man.
Ready?
Okay. Call to order, the January twenty-third, twenty-twenty-five Planning Commission meeting. Will everyone please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance and Commissioner Elmore lead us, please?
All right. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, staff, a roll call, please.
All commissioners are present this evening.
Okay, our next item are public comments. This is a time we take public comments on items that are not on the agenda, but that are generally within the purview of the Planning Commission. If you would wish to speak, please keep your comments to three minutes or less. Mr. Mosher?
Chair Rosin, members of the Planning Commission, my name is Jim Mosher. Later on your agenda, you have an item that affects a large portion of the city, and I want to make a non-agenda comment about that, which is falls under the purview of the Planning Commission because one of your functions, one of your duties actually, is to recommend changes to our planning codes to the City Council. The issue I wanted to bring to your attention is that item affecting a large part of Newport Beach was noticed, in addition to the notice of this meeting, by an ad in the Daily Pilot that fulfills the requirement for noticing the meeting. But as you will realize, that procedure dates from a time when a large portion of the people in Newport Beach actually received the Daily Pilot. In our modern times, relatively few do, and probably many of those who read the L.A. Times receive that online, and the classified section in which the notice is posted or published is not available online. So the reach of those ads is very limited, and if we're actually trying to inform the public about important items coming to you, I think that procedure needs to be rethought. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other speakers this evening for this item? Okay, seeing none, moving on. Next item is request for continuance as staff. Are there any requests for continuances?
Uh, no, we have no requests tonight.
Thank you. Our next item are consent items. This is the minutes of January ninth, twenty-twenty-five. Would anyone from the audience like to comment on the minutes from the January twenty-ninth, twenty, excuse me, January ninth meeting? Okay, seeing none. Would a Planning Commissioner like to make a motion?
I'll make a, I'll make a motion to approve the minutes with Mr. Mosher's edits.
Okay, I'll make a second. Let's call for vote.
The motion carries unanimously.
All right, our next item is public hearing items. This is item number two. The Newport Irvine Medical Center, PA two-zero-two-four dash zero-zero-seven-zero. Site location is three-three-zero-zero Irvine Avenue.
Chair Rosin, I need to announce my recusal on this item due to my employer owns a property in close proximity to this item.
Thank you, Commissioner Langford. Okay, staff?
Good evening, Chair Rosin, members of the Planning Commission. My name is Daniel Kopchever, Assistant Planner. This item is for the Newport Irvine Medical Center at thirty-three-hundred Irvine Avenue. The project location includes the current Newport Irvine Center, which is an existing three-story building, originally permitted by use permit for over height at thirty-eight feet by use permit in nineteen-eighty. Adjacent to the site is the American Institute of Architects Building, and proposed at the site location is a three-story parking structure with a solar canopy. We did receive a public comment on this item from this neighboring property owner who had concerns about buffering between the proposed parking structure and the property owner's property. There is an existing landscaping buffer, but it is on the commenter's side of the property. And as far as the, the other concerns they raised were due to parking spillover. And we'll be talking about the parking waiver and some subsequent slides. In the vicinity, current land uses is mostly multi-tenant offices in orange. Some of these in orange are also medical offices. And in purple, residential. The nearest residential is a non-conforming use. And further down past Birch Street are some conforming single-family residences. Project proposes to convert an existing three-story office building to a medical office, allowing a hundred percent medical tenants. There would also be major exterior remodel and constructing a two-hundred-and-two-space, three-story parking garage. The exterior remodel includes a new atrium at forty-five feet and new parapets to the existing building going up to forty-one feet, six inches. Landscaping improvements are included as well and, um, excuse me, removing floor area in the interior due to a new stairway and an open lobby concept. To permit the project as proposed, these three approvals are required. Major site development review for the height increase, staff approval to waive parking, and a traffic study due to the projected increase in average daily trips. Some of the key site development review findings are compatibility in terms of bulk and scale and aesthetics of the structure and additional project amenities beyond those that are required, such as landscaping and open space. The increased height should be compatible with the surrounding area and have a gradual transition in height to the other structures in the area. The architectural design of the project should provide visual interest with articulation and protection of significant views such as public viewpoints. This is the existing view from Irvine Avenue. As you can see, it's an unarticulated structure. It's dark, mostly opaque glass with some visible from street level mechanical equipment here in the middle. This would be a rendering of the proposed project. They're introducing new materials. This would be a cohesive design with the existing American Institute of Architects building with the accent materials being a similar dark color and the solar canopy proposed being that color as well. The glass is now more transparent and there is a clear entryway. For scale and compatibility, the tallest element of the structure would be the atrium at forty-five feet and then parapets on the building, forty-one feet and six inches, with the parking structure being twenty-eight feet and three inches. New landscaping is proposed along Orchard Drive. These would be seven Brisbane box trees, which go, which grow up to about seventy feet tall. In addition, there would be a hedge buffer in this area and then rehabilitate a landscape throughout the project site. There are setbacks. The required setback is fifteen feet fronting the street and thirty-nine feet of setbacks provided here, and then zero feet in, in all other setbacks where twenty-five, two, and ten are provided. The office building is in the center of the property, and then the proposed parking structure would be in the, in the corner. So fifty, fifty-six percent of the lot would remain undeveloped. These are the allowed maximum heights of parcels in the area. So thirty-two feet for a flat roof and thirty-seven feet for a sloped roof along Irvine Avenue, then thirty-seven feet across Orchard and then fronting Birch Street, and then the residential in the SP seven area can go up to thirty-five feet. This is a view showing, showing the project location from Irvine Avenue. You can see Orchard has a little bit of a higher elevation, Irvine at a lower elevation. And then this Acacia Avenue building has a retaining wall and is built on a, an elevated building pad, which would provide some visual relief from a height increase from the subject property. For the parking waiver, three-hundred-and-ninety-two spaces would be the parking requirement per code. The project's providing three-hundred-and-thirty-one spaces. The applicant retained RK Engineering for a parking study, who analyzed two comparable non-urgent care medical office locations. And their study determined that three-hundred-and-nine spaces would be the requirement for this project. Since the project's providing three-hundred-and-thirty-one spaces, we're not anticipating any project, any parking spillover from the project. For the required traffic study due to the generated additional daily trips, there was a traffic impact analysis prepared by the Gandini Group under the supervision of the city traffic engineer. It included fifteen study intersections, and none of these intersections would result in a level of unsatisfactory service. So no improvements or mitigation would be necessary. We do have some changes to the resolution to correct some typographical errors, including updating the date of approval of the use permit, nineteen-thirty-nine, and to remove condition of approval number fifty-one, as there's no longer a balcony included in the design. And we would modify condition of approval number six to remove that second sentence and just, just state what is remaining. We've added an additional condition of approval that the applicant is required to implement the recommendations of the parking management plan included in the parking study prepared by RK Engineering. Emergency health facilities, as defined in chapter twenty dot seventy of the Newport Beach Municipal Code, may be allowed, subject to review and approval of the Community Development Director, based on information that demonstrates the parking supply is adequate. We recommend conducting the public hearing, finding the project exempt from CEQA as an infill development project, and adopting a resolution. Available for any questions, and we have our applicant here for a brief presentation.
Thank you for that presentation. Commissioners, any questions for staff? Okay, seeing none. Why don't we report any ex parte communications? I'll go ahead. I met with the applicant and toured the property.
I also met with the applicant.
Met with the applicant.
Spoke with the applicant's consultant.
Spoke with the applicant's consultant as well.
Okay. And we'll go ahead and open the public hearing. Does the applicant wish to make a presentation?
Commissioner, staff, thank you for being here tonight. My name is Jason Croats. I am the co-founder and managing partner of Real Estate Development Associates, The Applicant. We appreciate staff's presentation tonight and their work getting this exciting project to this point. I, along with my family, have lived in the city for nearly half a century, and we strongly believe in the community and have done our part to give back and invest in this city. This is our second project in the immediate area, having completed the ground-up development of the Newport Heights Medical Office Campus on Birch Street about six years ago, which is just around the corner. We're excited to continue to invest in the community. And with me tonight, I have various members of our planning team who are here to answer any technical questions you may have about the project. We have some additional slides for review. However, I don't know if it's truly necessary, given the excellent job the staff has done in their presentation. So we have reviewed the conditions of approval and are in agreement with all of them and support the recommendation of staff. So, thank you.
That include the revisions that staff just proposed?
Yes.
Thank you. Okay, commissioners, do you have any questions of the applicant? Okay, I'm happy to know that the trees are off-site and so hopefully can stay. So that's great news. Anyone from the audience wish to speak, I suppose? Go ahead and sit down. Okay, seeing none. I guess we'll keep moving on. There's nothing really else to go over then. Then we'll go ahead and close the public hearing. And then bring it back to the commission. Been a lot of conversation tonight. Commissioners, any comment?
I'm happy to make a comment. I think it's a relatively straightforward application. I think the parking variance is warranted, given the fact the majority of it is just mechanical rooms. I don't have any concerns with that. That would probably be my primary. I think aesthetically, the building fits in with the neighborhood. So I can't really find a reason to not be supportive of this item and happy to make a motion to approve as is.
Commissioner Lowry, did you have a comment?
My fellow commissioner read my mind, but I just really, when I read it, it looks aesthetically, it's a very pleasing-looking building. You know, I believe, you know, findings, staff did a good job with all the findings. And my only, I guess you could say, initial concern or just I wanted to research a little bit more on the parking, but I'm satisfied with what they did with parking. So I will second the motion.
All right. Let's go ahead and call for a vote.
The motion carries unanimously.
Congratulations to the applicant. Moving on to the next item. Item number three. Actually, I'll give everybody a chance to exit. All right, our next item is item number three. This is the Housing Opportunities Overlay Zoning and Coastal Zoning District Amendments. This is PA 2024-0205. The site location is various.
Chair Rosin, I need to announce a recusal on this item as well due to property interests of my employer that are identified on the map.
Thank you, Commissioner Langford. Staff, do you have a presentation for us this evening?
Yes, good evening, Chair Rosin, planning commissioners. Ben Zadiba, Planning Manager, I have a brief presentation for you and then we'll field any questions and resulting questions from discussion you may have. So by way of a brief background, I know you've heard about the housing element quite a bit now, but the city was the ninth city in Orange County to have a certified adopted housing element, and that was back in October of 2022. Part of the adopted and certified housing element is the policy actions, which discusses the city's housing strategy and how it will meet the RENA requirement. Policy actions 1A through 1G require the city to provide housing opportunities through rezoning, the inventory of opportunity sites. And in September of 2024, the city council adopted an ordinance doing just that. So far, we have rezoned for these opportunities outside of the coastal zone. This is just an overview of the city and most of the city's boundary. You'll see the various housing opportunity overlay zoning districts. You've got the airport area, HO1. You've got West Newport Mesa, HO2. Dover West Cliff, HO3. Newport Center, HO4. And Coyote Canyon, HO5. But this evening, we're going to focus on two of those opportunity zone subareas. We're going to focus on HO1, which again is the airport area. And the proposed amendment there is quite simple. It's to allocate 179 dwelling units to a city-owned property at 1201 Dove Street. We're also going to focus on HO4, which is proposed to allocate 199 units to the current police station and fire station property on Santa Barbara Drive, and then also to increase maximum height limits for housing projects in that area as well. Diving right into the height, these exhibits were included in your agenda packet as part of the staff report. On the left, you'll see the existing height limits. On the right, you'll see the existing and proposed height limits. It's a little challenging to read on the screen, I'm sure, but wanted to just highlight that city staff focused on the Newport Center area in terms of looking at proposed height increases. A lot of that centered around the fact that the heights are 32 feet on the low end and ranging all the way up to the high-rise height limit, which is close to 300 feet. Part of the reason for that focus is the vision for Newport Center. Looking at the original master planning documents from Irvine Company and original planners such as William Pereira, the Newport Center was really supposed to be the downtown for the South Coast, and that's what I've quoted there. The city has a policy in the land use element which is intended to reinforce the original design concept, and that largely talks about the scale coming down from the northeastern corner at San Joaquin Hills toward the coast and the building heights scaling down progressively, again, towards the coast, largely to maintain views from those buildings. Staff included the picture on the left in your staff report. It's a photograph of a cardboard model in the 1960s, and you'll see how that sort of played out in terms of planning in the 2023 aerial to the right. In terms of benefits of increased height, again, the increased height in Newport Center aligns well with the original vision and general plan policy that supports heights that step down from the high-rise height limit of 300 feet all the way down towards the coast at around 50 feet to 32 feet. We're looking to improve the viability and vitality of housing projects that are potentially being proposed in the Newport Center area, and that furthers the housing elements implementation to ensure that the density of 20 dwelling units per acre for 50 dwelling units per acre can be met. We're also looking to allow higher density and smaller footprints, which will hopefully result in fewer sites. There for encouraging open space and views through the developments and activating an urban core that really yields a walkable mixed-use urban core in Newport Center. In terms of CEQA compliance, back in July of 2024, city council did certify a program environmental impact report for the entire housing element implementation program. The city had Kim Lee Horn and Associates prepare a consistency analysis memo, which is included as exhibit A to the resolution, evaluating the proposed height increases and found that pursuant to state CEQA guidelines, section 15162, there is no additional environmental review required at this time for the proposed planning exercise of increasing heights. Just wanted to highlight some written correspondence that was received specifically related to two outlying properties or sites that were not studied as part of staff's initial exercise. And I've gone ahead and put the requested heights in the gold boxes you'll see. At the northeastern part of the map, you've got the Pac Bell or AT&amp;T Switching Facility Site with a request to go to 48 feet as part of this overlay exercise. And the bottom southeastern corner, you've got the St. Michael's Church, which is requesting to go to 55 feet with a flat roof and 55 feet with a sloped roof through this amendment as well. Staff is recommending you conduct a public hearing and find that CEQA is clearly being addressed by the program EAR and that you adopt a resolution recommending city council approval. Obviously, you're not approving this item tonight. You're making a recommendation to city council. Your recommendation could include the additional sites that were requested through the written correspondence. If you do move forward with that action, city staff will go to the Airport Land Use Commission for a consistency determination hearing in February, and then assuming the ALAC finds is consistent due to the distance from the airport proper, I will be looking to go to city council in March. That concludes my presentation, and staff's available for any questions you may have. Thank you.
Thank you. Appreciate that. Commissioners, any questions for staff? Mr. Lowry?
Yeah, how we had the two people that inquired, the church and the Pac Bell, is this kind of after this? I know it's, is it, anyone else, can they come in at a later date through a request if, or is this kind of like a one-and-done type of approval? Or would they just, would someone be able to come in another time if they, if they, you know, wanted to make those changes to their current limitations?
So once this effort of the initial amendments is completed, then a subsequent request could be made by a private developer as an applicant on amendment to increase height.
Just a normal, okay. Normal amendment, okay.
Chair Rosin, so what we're starting to see now with the housing implementation is, you know, we're focused on the Newport Center, looking at heights, and there's active projects that are being worked on with renderings, and now they're starting to realize that they need a little bit of more extra height to actually make the project pencil. We have minimum density requirements that we have to maintain per the housing element. So if your minimum density, then your footprint starts to shrink a little bit, so you got to kind of go up a little bit to have a marketable product, and that's what we're starting to see. These two, just timing-wise, it's just coincidental. They need some height. We'll probably see more in the future as we continue to kind of develop and implement the housing element.
Thank you. Commissioners? Mr. Celine?
I have a question regarding the site plane on here. Can you explain that a little bit for me?
Thank you, Commissioner Celine. I'm glad you pointed that out. The Newport Center site plane is a combination of four ordinances that started back in the 70s. And basically, what that does is establishes a more restrictive site view for the residential across MacArthur that has views over the Newport Center. And the reason I'm glad you highlighted that is staff is not proposing to make any changes to the Newport Center site plane. I know that's been very clearly articulated. Those residents want to see that stay in place, and that's been supported by council through previous actions. So that is not proposed to change at this time.
So is the, so the goal of the site plane is to protect the people on the other side of MacArthur looking, I guess that would be west?
That's correct.
Okay, so it really doesn't, it's not designed to protect anybody in Fashion Island looking south?
That's right.
Okay, okay. I was concerned about the, about that, the big building F, the 270-foot. Obviously, that would screw up the site plane if you're going south. So, okay, now I understand. Thank you.
Okay, I guess we, any other comments for staff? Yes, ex parte communication, go ahead and start, none?
None. None.
With some various, I guess, property owners and stakeholders, I guess, just maybe future property owners and actually some citizens, I guess, concerned citizens that were talking specifically about the views, but.
All right, why don't we go ahead and open the public hearing? Does anyone from the audience wish to speak on this item? Mr. Moser?
Chair Rosin, members of the planning commission, my name is Jim Moser. To begin, I think the whole concept of the housing overlays that allow by right housing development on certain selected properties and not other ones that are similarly situated is unfair and inequitable. I also think it's now becoming something of a bait and switch. We have added 8,174 new units to our general plan without a green light vote, the entitlement for them. The supposed justification for that is that the state is requiring us to build this new housing, but the state is not requiring us to build 8,174 new units of any kind. It is actually requiring us, and we have promised, to deliver 2,707 units that are affordable to households with moderate and below incomes. And if we don't produce those, those are the ones, failure to produce, will subject us to possible decertification of our housing element and all the horrible things that can happen as a result of that. This current proposal seems counterproductive because as the housing element and the zoning code is currently adopted, as I understand it, developers have an incentive to actually build affordable housing if they want to go to a higher, build a higher building because they can get that as a concession for providing the affordable housing. This is giving them free opportunity to go to higher heights, means they can build bigger, more luxury units. It's counterproductive to our current plan. And in fact, as we heard, there already is an application pending at the Edwards Theaters to go to 240 feet, and that will all be 140 luxury market rate units. I also wanted to mention, again, the inequity of this goes also to the noticing. As I said, there was a notice in the printed edition of the Daily Pilot informing the public about this. Are the people impacted by this actually told about it? We have residents up here on this very building who objected to the sale, which has been turned on its side, and this approval will be now allowing 150-foot buildings at the corner right over here. Aren't they bothered about this? How about Mr. Former Mayor Ridgeway with his car wash project, which was reluctantly allowed to go to 50 feet, and now he will be surrounded by 85 and 150-foot buildings? Has he been notified of this? And finally, as to the view impacts, we have this last-minute document that has no page numbers, can't easily refer to it, but the analyst seems to have not been aware that we actually have two public view streets, coastal view streets. One of is Avocado on this side, and more importantly, is MacArthur Boulevard up here. And are not these new buildings going to affect views from that? They did not analyze that, said there would be no impact. I don't believe it. Thank you.
Next speaker, please.
Chair Rosin and members of the planning commission, my name is Debbie Stevens. I'm with the Harborview Hills Community Association, and thank you for your comment about the site plane. My first comment is going to be to thank staff for protecting the view plane. I do, it's been not so much by me, but some members of our association have really been pounding on this over and over and over again, and thank you. I do appreciate that. It does keep in line with big stuff at the back, small stuff at the front, protecting views. Yes, it protects the site plane from our community association, also does all the way down MacArthur, a good portion of MacArthur. I questioned 270 at the cinema just because that's really kind of pushing and you're getting to 28 stories, something like that. I mean, it depends on how big the units are, but something to that effect, and so you're really starting to impact that view plane. But generally speaking, I'm going to thank staff for doing that. I would also like to ask staff a little bit what Jim said. How is this noticed? I found out about this at noon today, and I don't think that's fair to the community, and I think other people may have different opinions, but I would like to understand how this stuff is noticed so that we can get notice earlier and maybe give you our, you know, I know you have my email address, but maybe do that so that we can make a little bit more substantial comments. But my first impression is that I'm happy with the protection of the site plane. Thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker, please.
Chair Rosin, planning commission and staff, my name is Tom Nicholson. I'm a resident of Corona del Mar. Address is 21 Schul. I'm on the board of St. Michael's Church, and we've submitted a letter respectfully requesting that our site, which is Site 147, be included in the height limitation adjustments for Housing Opportunity Zone Number Four. So really appreciate the consideration of that. Thank you.
Thank you. Are there any additional speakers this evening?
Good evening, Larry Tucker. I would like to talk a little bit about height. Everybody assumes there's going to be more density with height. There's actually, in Newport Center, some of the best real estate in the world, there's going to be less density. And the coin of the realm in the real estate development business is land residual value. So you will see that an equal floor, 20 stories up, you have three 1,500-square-foot units and one 4,500-square-foot unit. The 4,500-square-foot The 4,500-square-foot unit is going to sell for a greater per-square-foot price than the three 1,500 units in the aggregate. I mean, it's just more valuable, and there'll be people that will pay money for that. And the theater project's a perfect example. It's about four acres. It's zoned for 50 units to the acre, and they're going to build 140 units. Are they doing that because they don't like density? No, it's more valuable to have bigger units. And those are going to be people that have money, they're not going to be here, they're not going to be creating impacts, or they're going to be here a part of the time when they're not visiting other homes that they own. So in addition to the things that the staff pointed out in terms of making a better site plan, because you're not covering as much of the land area, the impacts, and really we should be talking about impacts, are going to be less with height. And the, you know, my friend Debbie mentioned that it was about getting close to impacting the view plane. View plane's an ordinance, and it either is impacted or it isn't impacted, it's not close to impacted. So the size of those units or the height of the units really isn't affecting the plane. I mean, the plane is designed to make sure that direct views are not impacted, not somebody standing on their tiptoes, craning their neck, looking over to the side and saying, oh my God, I think I see a structure. So thank you. I think that'll, it'll all end up at the council, but there are positives about having more height, not less.
Thank you. Any additional speakers this evening? Okay, seeing none. Staff, do you have any responses or comments for the record?
Sure, Chair Rosin, thank you. With respect to the view corridors and retaining public views, I just want to note that housing projects under the overlay will more than likely still require a site development review, which one of the findings specifically talks about protecting public viewpoints in compliance with the municipal code and the general plan. So staff feels very confident that analyzing views and potential impacts to views is something that will be done on a project-by-project basis to ensure high-quality design and retaining view corridors through Newport Center as appropriate. And then with respect to noticing, the city published, as was mentioned in the Daily Pilot, and that is specifically outlined in the zoning code or the municipal code rather, about public hearings and procedures. When you have a certain amount of individuals who will be noticed, you are able to publish in the newspaper in lieu of sending individual notices due to the amount of properties impacted. The city did comply with that procedure in this case. Furthermore, the agenda is posted in advance in compliance with the Brown Act and also sent out via email, once available, to those who've signed up for a select alert. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Then we'll go ahead and bring it back to the commission for discussion and action, which could also include the recommendation and those additional sites. So commissioners?
Ben, thanks very much, by the way. Very detailed, appreciate everything, staff. I think our, we've kind of talked about this, a lot of stuff in the coastal zone and the FEMA stuff, and as the city evolves and obviously the RENA, it's not everyone's favorite always, but I think this is a good location to potentially bring some taller density, if you want to call it that. There's also economic realities to building, and if you want good products, you kind of have to have thresholds, and it also forces or it allows properties to trade and improve over time. So I think these kind of, these areas make sense. I see it as natural kind of growth and evolution of the city. I also, I don't think I have a problem with the other two properties. Know them very well and seem to get the product that really makes sense would be the best product for those spots. I think they probably need these sites.
Thank you, Commissioner Harris. Mr. Lowry, or excuse me, anyone more?
I second and echo Commissioner Harris's comments, and I'm also in agreement with, I would consider to say bolting on or how, you know, adding to with the Pac Bell side and the St. Michael's site. I think all of that should be, should be sent up to council, and I'm happy to make a motion to approve.
Okay, hearing a motion. Do we have a second?
Second.
All right, call for a vote.
The motion carries unanimously.
All right, moving on. I guess we'll go. All right, these are staff and commissioner items. Item number four is motions for reconsideration. Are there any motions for reconsideration? Okay, seeing none. Item number five is the report from the Community Development Director.
Good evening, Chair Jaime Morillo, Deputy Director. I just want to note that the February 6th Planning Commission has been canceled. We also don't have any items lined up for February 20th, so it looks like you'll have a break for the full month of February, but we do have items for the March 6th agenda. That's it.
All right. Thank you very much. And then would anyone from the audience like to comment? Mr. Mosher.
Chair Rosin, just for your information, on page six of the handout that is in the lobby, it gives a list of pending items before the California Coastal Commission, and I am surprised that the staff is not aware that items three and five on that list are scheduled for the February 5th Coastal Commission meeting in Long Beach.
Thank you, Mr. Mosher. Moving on to item number six, this is request for excused absences. Commissioners, are there any requests for excused absences? All right, seeing none. We adjourned.